My apologies, if we could restart if we could. We have all.
Commissioner Drosky?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Hornet?
Here.
Commissioner Preston?
Here.
Mayor O'Donnell?
Uh, here. Can you please have a moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance? A moment of silence to the country who do those. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could have approval of the city commission meeting minutes for February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second, motion from Commissioner Parnas, second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Acknowledgement of the city board meeting minutes for our community appearance board meeting for December eighth, twenty twenty-one. Our African American Heritage Board meeting minutes for July twenty-second, August twelfth, September ninth, October fourteenth, November fourth, November sixteenth, December ninth, December twenty-one, January thirteenth, and February third, or so, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And our non-inform retirement committee meeting minutes November eighth, twenty twenty-one. Motion to approve. Second. I have, say, I have Commissioner Drosky, your hand up.
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to speak a, a, a quick minute about the city board minutes because if you notice, our agenda says acknowledgement of the city board minutes, yet at every commission meeting, we do a motion to approve. And I, I don't, in my opinion, we're technically not approving them. I mean, we're not at these boards. We don't know what's happening, so we're not approving the board minutes. We're supposed to be acknowledging, acknowledging, acknowledging them, easy for me to say. So really, I think, even though it may be splitting hairs, I think a motion to acknowledge going forward would be more, would be more appropriate. That's my, that's my two cents. And, and as far as tonight goes, if you look at the minutes from the African American Heritage Board, I don't want to minimize the great work that that committee does, but if you look at their minutes, it's very challenging to figure out what's, what's going on. There's references to individuals by first name only. Uh, I have no idea who they're talking about, what's going on. There's incomplete sentences. It's very difficult to understand and follow along. So I think there needs to be some work, uh, on those minutes going forward. So I'm not prepared to put my stamp of approval on those tonight to acknowledge or approve or whatever that we're doing. So I, I, I don't know if you want to separate those out and approve the other ones or approve them as a whole, but I mean, either way, I'm going to be a no on that, just because I think, I, I think we just need to do a better job with those, with those minutes going forward. Because if you look at it, it's, it's very challenging.
Um, we currently have a motion and a second right now. Uh, would anyone like to make an amendment to that? No. Okay. Your point is taken, uh, Commissioner Drosky. Uh, I can see the issue there, minutes. Um, and I understand what, what the point is, and probably, it is an acknowledgement of the city board meeting minutes. That's what we are doing. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Parnas, do you want to speak?
Yes, uh, what we might do is have the head of the committee, uh, given a book of Robert's rules as to what should go in minutes, and we simplify this.
Well, I don't think Robert rules, let's solve the problem with the ticket, actually, with the minutes. We'll see if they don't reference people by last name.
I know.
There's a lot of issues through there. I, I don't think it's Robert rules to solve that, but I think we could have staff.
I think, fine.
We have a motion, second.
Yeah.
Uh, we have, uh, City Manager, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, David Santucci, City Manager. Commissioner Drosky, thank you for your comments. I, I also recognize that and had a discussion with the city clerks. We're going to work with, with the board, um, not only on the way in which the minutes are taken, um, but also the timing of them as well. So I, I appreciate you recognizing that. I've already had that discussion with, with the city clerk, so we will work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we're going to do roll call then on the, on the motion.
Commissioner Drosky?
No.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Horner?
Yes.
President of Preston?
Yes.
Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes. So we have approval of the agenda for March first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion to approve, Vice Mayor, we have second by Commissioner Parnas. All in favor, say aye.
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 Um, one thing I would like to say, if, if, if all right, the issue, we approved the agenda, if we can move up item number six. And I'll look, so the attorney gives guidance on where I can move that up on the agenda, but I would like to have that item moved up. I think we have a lot of people here. We are County Commissioner, County Commissioner Mark Hogan to the audience here tonight, and I want to make sure that we utilize this time, uh, well, so.
Mayor, you can move it up before item number one, after the clerk gives the instructions on the Zoom meeting.
Excellent. Mission is over.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, it's number.
We have a couple of questions for the live on stream tonight's meeting. Three minutes will be allotted. I will put additional minutes and be granted by Mayor O'Donnell. Anyone connected online to your certain video must hover the mouse at the bottom of the screen and click the participants tab on the right of the gray skin. You'll be recognized while you're violating any audio on the image. Those participants may be on landline or, or mobile. Somebody dial star nine three one man. You'll, you'll be recognized by their last four digits of your phone number. Make dial star six at necessary time.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number six is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield, Florida, approving an amendment to section three point zero four, elections and terms of the city charter to modify the term restrictions for the city commission, providing requisite ballot language for submission to electors, calling for a special election on the proposed amendment to the city charter to be held on Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two, providing for submission to the electors for approval or disapproval of the proposed charter amendment, providing for requisite ballot language, providing procedure for balloting, providing for notice, providing for related matters, and providing for an effective date. This is first reading, uh, and it's sponsored by Commissioner Parnas. We believe he has a presentation, and I will, uh, be available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Parnas, do you want to get a quick start?
Yes. This is an important issue. It wasn't that many years ago that the public voted to limit terms to two terms, eight years, the commissioners and the mayor. However, this is the twenty-first century, and I look at the county as a whole. And out of the thirty-one cities, twenty cities have either no limits or at least three, and I'm going to read them into the record. No limits. They can run forever. Plantation, Sunrise, Davie, Pembroke Pines, Pompano Beach, Allendale Beach, Fort Lauderdale, Pembroke Pines, Wilton Manor, Southwest Ranches, Miramar, and Lazy Lake. Twelve years, which is three terms, Hollywood, Lauderdale, Fort Lauderdale, Coconut Creek, West Pot, Margate, Cooper City, and Leidars Point. That is twenty out of thirty-one cities have more than two terms. I am not asking you tonight to pass judgment on whether we should have two terms or three terms. That is a decision that I feel should be made by the voters. This ordinance tonight that we are bringing forth is only to put it on the November ballot and let the voters decide. If you think this is an issue that the voters should decide, here's your chance in a minute to speak. If you think it's not, here's your chance to speak. I just feel that this is an important item and a change in our charter, and it should be decided by the voters.
Yep.
It's good for a start.
Okay. Uh, Commissioners, uh, any comments? I would like to use the commission input before we open. Okay. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I have, uh, read over this, and I understand exactly, uh, where, uh, Commissioner Parnas is coming from. Uh, I understand, Senator, I understand, um, why he might say it's hard. But I can tell you that I've received calls since the residents have become aware of this, and, uh, I have not time to receive one call for this. Everybody that called in was not for this, thought it would be unhealthy for the city. And, um, I understand their concerns, actually, uh, I am available to, um, how they feel about that. So I think that when we look at city charter, when it's in place, we have to ask ourselves, is it worth? Is it worth? We have eight years. Be able to make your case, you have four, and if you're making case good enough, residents may ask back on addition. I think that eight years is enough. That's enough. Be able to do, to do the job if you're doing a good job. And in that for that, um, you have for eight years. Hopefully, you've built an alliance in the community, and that will allow someone else to have a chance, for somebody else to choose. And, um, I think we're at best definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Smart. Commissioner Hudek, or Drosky, any comments? See a lot of people moving towards the camera, but no one clicking your.
No, I clicked mine.
Okay.
Right button.
I don't, I don't see you for some reason, but.
Oh, there we go. How about that? There we go. Thank you. Um, this is a, a, a tough decision, and, and I understand letting the voters decide. Uh, but you know, the, the Vice Mayor said something that, that I have to listen to, and you know, the charter is there for a reason, and if the system is not broken, why are we looking to change it? Why are we looking, uh, to amend it? When I first got elected, I thought, well, four years, I'll be able to accomplish a whole bunch of stuff. And then my eyes opened on how slow government does run. And it does take a couple of years just to get your sea legs and build the relationships that you need in order to make the change that you, uh, you know, you got elected to do. But I also feel that eight years is a long enough time to put your stamp on the city and to give back to the community. There are other avenues. There's, um, you can run for mayor. You can wait the four years, and if, um, you know, the individual who replaced you did not do as good a job as you had hoped, you can run again. So I, I think, you know, I, I understand to letting the voters decide, but I haven't really heard an outcry of individuals wanting this changed. I have heard, uh, received phone calls from individuals who wanted to stay the way it is. Uh, and so I'm not sure why we're looking to change this at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drosky.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, both my colleagues, the Vice Mayor, Preston and, and Commissioner Hudek, make good points, and I'm going to echo some of them. Um, a- as far as the merits of the proposal before us, Commissioner Hudek was saying that it does take a couple of years to, to get your sea legs in this position, to figure out, you know, who the players are, not just in the city, but in the, in the county and at the state level, and to develop those relationships. So when you, when there's turnover on the commission, there's a lot of institutional knowledge that goes, that goes with that. Um, and, 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 and a lot of institutional knowledge that benefits the city of Deerfield Beach and, and its residents. By the same token, uh, I also tend to agree with the concept that you have eight years to make your, to make your case to the, to the residents. And if you look at the data, the empirical data from the other sister cities in Broward County, there is a case to be made that two terms is not, is not enough, that the majority of the sister cities have no terms or three term limits, um, beyond what the city of Deerfield Beach has. So this is an argument that has pluses and minuses on, on both sides. And, and oh, by the way, I, I have a, a big concern uh, with this applying to the, to the existing commission. It just seems it's, it, it could be perceived as politicians granting themselves another term or, or doing them, doing themselves a favor. And, and I, I don't think that is the intent, uh, but I certainly don't want it to be perceived that way going forward. What I propose is that this is something that is very important to the residents. It's something that I want to hear more from the residents. So I would be inclined to move this along to second reading so that I can have the opportunity to have a District Four meeting, and I've already selected a date with the City Manager uh, for March twenty-nine. So to have a second reading, not at our next meeting in March, but to the first meeting in April, to give me the opportunity to have a district meeting and to hear from my residents that, do they think this is a good idea or a bad idea? This is something that Commissioner Parnas is right. It should be decided by the voters. Um, and I want to hear from my residents and the voters in my district what they think, uh, because I'm deciding for, for them. And the time that this was put on the agenda until tonight honestly was not enough time because I have a very expansive district that goes from I ninety-five on Hillsborough Boulevard to the Turnpike, south to southwest Tenth Street, and then east to Military Trail. That's a lot of ground to cover. I have a lot of big communities in my district. And I would like that input and feedback, um, before I make a final determination. So if I were to move it along tonight, that doesn't mean I'm going to vote for it on second reading. Uh, but I think it's well-served to give me and the rest of you the opportunity to speak in more detail to more members of our communities, to see what they actually feel on this proposal. It's very far-reaching. This is something, when you change the charter, that you should do with as much knowledge and as much input as possible. And, and I'm just asking for that opportunity to, to get that input from my residents so that I make the best decision going forward. I don't want a handful of people to decide this one way or another. I think it's too important. And so I've set up a, a District Four meeting again on March twenty-nine, to have a second reading on, on, in the beginning of April. Uh, and let's see what my residents and your residents say and come back and have a more robust discussion on this rather than, the, rather than what we're doing tonight. I think this is too important to, uh, to just kind of do it on the fly tonight. And so that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Growing my two cents on it. Um, I am uncomfortable as being someone sitting up here. It's going to be term, it is term limited out after this term, to vote on something that would seem like it would give me another shot of sitting up here. By the time I'm done, it will be sixteen years in office when I finish this term here in the city of Deerfield Beach. Nineteen, late nineteen-eighties to two thousand eight, we had two mayors in Deerfield Beach. That's it. I spent a lot of time sitting up here trying to correct a lot of the things that were done, uh, by those two mayors in that period of time. Uh, it's a lot of wasted time. So, um, while I understand the point of it takes a while to get acclimated, get things done, and the speed of government is brutally painful, I can also tell you that having set up here through pandemic, through, um, the greatest, uh, real estate crash that's happened since the Great Depression, uh, there's been a lot of challenges. And, and I don't think it's, well, you've got eight years to make your case, and, uh, and that's it. There, you know, if you can't do it in that timeframe, it should be done. Uh, I, I don't necessarily agree with that, but I will say this. I do think that the voters did vote for this. They did it for a reason. And I know that's been a little while ago, despite, uh, you know, some of the lies on it. They're just flat out non-actual information to be put out there by people that really, um, don't know what they're talking about, or they do, they're just liars. The voters decided on a lot of things. We had a charter review board to look at this. Or Commissioner Militello, Commissioner Miller, Blaine saying that, well, uh, they're the ones that were against moving elections from, let's say, March to November. The truth of the matter is, we had the citizen review board come together and vote on that and make recommendations submission before they made charter, uh, changes. The person that headed that committee up was Gene Robb. Gene Robb sat up here and said, when asked, point-blank, go back and look at the meetings, meeting minutes. To Commissioner Militello, uh, when asked, do you think we should move from March to November? They said, no. We don't feel that you should, if you're exactly the way it is. But what they did say is, we do believe the term should be in effect, and we do believe that it should go to the voters, that, uh, we have staggered terms. And I think that serves the, the city well. It does have a, a, a flip side to that coin. It's not good for Deerfield Beach. Issues like Tenth Street in particular. I've watched people run for office that have come up here, that have run for District Four, see, and say, in a sunset interview, whether they thought, you know, what do you think about Tenth Street? They were so clueless and so uninvolved and unengaged. And they said, well, I don't think it's a big deal. It's one of the biggest projects, and it can have one of the most devastating effects in the city of Deerfield Beach than any product, project that's happened the last thirty, forty years. That's how serious of this project has been. Having spent seven years going to meetings and negotiating with F D O T and the Broward M P O, the three people that have done it consistently have been myself, Commissioner Drosky, and Commissioner Parnas. That's a lot of institutional knowledge, rules, should those three people be removed from this board. That's not healthy for the city of Deerfield Beach. It's not a knock on the District One or District Two Commissioners, but that just means that the districts that is affected the most will be up for reelection at the same time. That's the flip side of this point. There's also the relationships that you have with the county, you know, the city, cities, you lose that. But I do believe that the people have spoken on this. I don't have a problem letting them speak again, and this is what they feel. Uh, I see that we have some petitions that have been signed, and I'm always, well, it's nice to kind of have that. I don't use that as it is huge weight as far as where my decisions go on that, because you never know how these petitions are presented to people in the, sometimes people don't realize they're signing. I have heard from people that are in support of this. I've heard from a lot of people that aren't in support of this. I do believe that the residents did speak at one point. If there wasn't a cost associated with letting them speak on this issue, I would have no problem with it. I have a bit of a problem because there is an expense to do it. Uh, and the majority, it's not overwhelming, because the majority of people I've heard from are not favored. So I, I'm curious to hear what the public has to say about this. Uh, Commissioner Parnas?
Yeah, uh, and if I may ask you, you say a number of people called you. How many exactly?
I don't know exactly.
Well, give me an estimate.
Somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty, thirty people.
Good. I turned in a hundred and sixty-eight signatures for it, none against it. And we have the public here tonight. And as far as the issue, well, the public had spoken before. The public spoke when we originally adopted our charter, and then they spoke again to change it. Maybe it's time the public spoke again, whether or not to change. All I'm asking is that we put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. Not whether it's good or bad for the city, but giving the voters an opportunity to say their piece at the ballot. And as far as the expense is concerned, we give fifty thousand dollars, if I remember, to a football team. I think we can give less than a dollar for every voter in Deerfield, which happens to be forty-nine thousand eight hundred voters. The total cost would be thirty-four thousand to put this on the ballot in November. That's one of the reasons I suggested November, because it would be the least expensive and probably the biggest turnout because they happen to be voting for Senator and Governor and Congressman at that election. Mike, you also said you heard from your constituents and, uh, Todd. Specifically, how many? I'd like to get an idea or feel for how many people that you said were negative. And obviously, none were positive in your district. Is that what you're telling me?
That is.
Well, uh, I, I'm going to go ahead and say, I didn't direct the question to this, but I'll, I'll tell you from my experience. I've got, I've got one person that called in and, uh, or sent an email in that wanted to speak in favor of it. I talked to probably two or three other people. So they were fair. I've talked to about eight, ten people. I said they're against.
Okay.
So, so to give you the numbers of where all that, on that, uh, if Commissioner Hudek, Commissioner Drosky, I don't know if you have a comment? The question asked by, uh, Commissioner Parnas.
I have not had one call for somebody who was for it, and I've had four calls for people that are against it.
Four calls, okay. At this point, I'd like to hear from the public.
Commissioner Drosky, do you want to answer that question also?
Sorry, I had to un, I had to unmute. Um, I have had zero calls for, and I've had zero calls against. I received one email today from a District Four resident, which I think you all received, which was against. And I have proactively, on my own, called, um, key members of my district, asking them what they thought about the proposal before tonight. Um, and I would have, and it was probably less than ten. Uh, and I did not keep a scorecard, but I would say most of them did not have a problem with it. Uh, surprisingly, they did not have an issue with it, but that's ten people in my district I do not want to make a decision on. That's why I wanted to, I want to have a, a district meeting and to go to association meetings in my district to get more input to make a decision on this important issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Drosky. I'm going to go ahead and open it to the public. I'm going to start with those in the room here tonight. So you're going to love speaking aside. Just come up, be redeemed, address for record.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Mark Hogan. I am the Broward County Commissioner from Pearl Springs, Pearl Springs. And, uh, after several years of the pandemic, straight to be here, I feel ten years older after two years, but, uh, I'm very happy to see you and address this issue real quickly, Mayor.
Absolutely, sir. So, um,
as a Broward County Commissioner, I ran it years ago. I'm actually going into my third term. And, um, when I first got elected to the Broward County Commission, there was the issue of the penny tax, right? And I felt, I'm against raising tax. I'm absolutely opposed to commissioners raising tax. And even though I was opposed to it, I had so many people saying, let the voters decide. And I was against it. I would never vote for any taxes, to raise taxes for the public, whether it be millage tax or a penny tax. But even though I was against it, I gave it to the voters, and surprisingly, the voters voted for it, which ended up giving millions of dollars to Deerfield Beach with the transportation. And now they were talking also years ago about, uh, we don't get an electric mayor. We rotate our mayor. And the charter review wanted to have an elected mayor, put it on the ballot. I was against it. I said exactly what you said, Mayor. If it's broke, not broken, why fix it? But we come around to let the voters decide. That's what I think where we're going to be mayor situation. Now, as Broward County Commissioner, I run in five. The most important issue that I feel, there are a lot of important issues, is the Tenth Street. It can be devastating. It could be, it could be done effectively. We're talking about a project with, what is it, there are billions of dollars that could really hurt or help this community. And so when I got involved, eight years ago, it's still going on, eight years ago, I was working with your commission and, uh, trying to help come up with something that will help the city of Deerfield. The state could care less about the people here. I'll say that in State of Florida, our transportation, in my opinion, cares less about how the people of Deerfield feel. They want to do what the vendors do, but it's important. So I, I kind of want to emphasize what the mayor said. It's really important. The biggest issue you have right now that'll affect the most voters is Tenth Street. And that's why I would think you want to let the voters decide. That's all. I don't think you should make any decisions. I think it's always good to let the voters decide. I think it's always good to let the voters decide, because if three people leave, the middle, this thing isn't done yet. I just want to say, I don't know if that will be impactful, if that will hurt your city. I certainly can't help if the knowledge of your commission leaves the city with one of the biggest issues still facing the city. So, you know, while, while I am totally for term limits, I think Commissioner Parnas talked about twenty, thirty-one cities. You don't have, I think people want term limits. People want their elected officials to come, and they want them to go. They don't want them sticking around for hours. But to add one term, if the voters don't want it, let them say they don't want it, but I will enforce letting voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Richards. I'm at Q C four Harvard, at Deerfield Beach. And I came to tell you that I'm very proud of Commissioner Parnas, because he had the guts to bring this up. And Mayor, you can more than understand, you had four terms, two terms as Commissioner, and then you were elected as Mayor, and you, the second term for Mayor, you are opposed, which means that the city likes what you're doing, and they wouldn't have voted for you. I think the entire voting block needs to decide whether you should stay or go. I think all of you, I'm proud of everything that you're doing. I think you're all doing a very good job. I'm listening to Commissioner Hogan talking about the 10th Street overpass, and I'm being very passionate against this. And we're being suffered into this. Many of the people live in Century Village, the older people that were against it, and I hear them, you know, and the parents that have passed away. You have all the younger people that don't care, and I'm interested. So I'm hoping that you'll have another meeting, and you'll let more people talk about it, and you'll decide accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Jackson, thirty-six, October, thirty-fourth Avenue. I am in your district, and I am against this if we have one, okay? I think the voters has already decided. I think it's wrong. You guys go ahead and put this back to be on agenda, and also Parnas. Not coming at you. You always like to compare stuff when District Two has something going on here, and again, for the kids. You mentioned about, it gave a bunch of kids fifty thousand dollars. There's no comparison. When you put this on the ballot, it's called from the taxpayer's money, okay? That's to help those kids that doesn't have, and I see it. We don't have any kind of sports winning for our kids in the city of Deerfield Beach. So please don't compare it to. And you like to throw stuff like on District Two, but President, I noticed that, not getting at you, but please, there's no comparison. I'm against it. There's a lot of people against it. And if I put it on the ballot, I would tell you, I am one that would be knocking on just about everybody's door to tell them to vote against it. Remember that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ray Olson. I'm from four ninety-eight, Dorrit, here in Deerfield Beach. I don't see any reason not to put this as an amendment out of ballot, fly through. I think if you find a Commissioner that is a quality Commissioner and shows energy and commitment to the people, the people will decide whether they want or don't want him or her. And I don't see any reason to not let them vote. I think the cost is minimal compared to getting a quality Commissioner that really knows what's going on. So I always say, trust the people. If you really have opposition to this, they're gonna vote against it anyway. So that's my position on it. Thank you for your time to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Is this an important item? Because it is gonna be a change to the city charter. I feel the decision should be left to the voters in November.
David, your address.
Did you want my address, sorry?
David, your address.
Sorry, forty-eight, nine, one, Northwest Eighteen Avenue, Deerfield.
And your name?
Linda. I feel if voters want to keep the charter and Commissioners for a third term, then it should be up to the voters to make that decision. And I say, put it on the referendum, it's not a yes or a no. It's just let the voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Paula Cook. I'm at sixty-two, Centennial, Deerfield. I just have a question. When is the last time voters addressed this question?
It was in two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four.
Thank you. Two thousand and six, actually, no, sorry, two thousand and six.
Hi, good evening. My name is Beverly Victor. I live at forty-eight, northeast, nineteenth terrace in Deerfield. I'm here tonight to say I oppose term limits. We have an election process here in Deerfield Beach. We're unhappy with one of our elected officials. We vote them out of office. On the other hand, someone is doing a good job and continues to do a good job, why would we want to get rid of them? For that reason, I stand here and say I am against term limits. Thank you.
Good evening. Alicia Portino, one forty, northeast Fifth Street, Deerfield Beach. Excuse me, I have a question. I need a clarification for a couple of things. Excuse me, isn't there a way already if a Commissioner is term limited out where they can run for a third term? Isn't there a process for that?
No.
No? There, there, it used to be?
I'm not sure, but I don't believe so, so I'll get to it.
So there's no way, you know, say, I want to get on the ballot or say, you know, run for a third term?
Not, not here in Deerfield Beach, no.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm sure some of pride, but yeah.
Okay, but there is no way to, one term limit is a term limit, that's it. That's the terms you're at.
Yeah.
Unless you are for a different seat.
Correct.
Okay, second question. I understand the need or want or continuity toward the 10th Street project. Is there, let's say, the three people who worked the most on that, term limited out, don't get reelected, or don't, this doesn't pass, or a third term? There is no way that the new people who would be appointed to the board or the N P O or whatever, for that knowledge to be passed on, or for them to do their homework on what has happened in the last ten years or so regarding 10th Street?
I'm sure there could be.
So. Okay, one day, okay, thank you. This one information, all right.
My name is Richard Rosen's wife, ninety-seven Farmy, Deerfield Beach, former Commissioner, and I've worked on 10th Street freeway and found this other kind of mall project. You know, I'd say that if the term limits came up, if the commission lost its seat, the people like myself out there would know about 10th Street, or if not, Century Village, should continue on that upset. However, I've made a decision on that, and that seemed no lawsuit to come forward or excuse that in any way. And certainly, Mayor, you did a tremendous job. The nineteen points you gave there, I'll give you a doubt of many of them. Thank you for your contribution. Adding a third city to Deerfield Beach, I raise the same question. Why? Why? It's not broken. We need to change the charter and raise money for a charter amendment if it isn't necessary. And if it goes on the charter, it goes on the ballot in November. That ballot is so long, the reason to remove it from that election process to March was they felt, and that's enough of the city residents voting in that election, they didn't get down to the bottom of the ballot. I raised that issue once before myself on commission. This is the answer. And what is this issue addressing? What problem are we trying to solve? For Deerfield Beach, this term limit extension, trying to solve, root benefit. Is it necessary? Step aside, solve a real problem for the city residents. Two, there is no actual observable problem. There is the issue of self-interest fairness. Is this a real or perceived problem for good governance? The Deerfield Beach city conditions should not be seen as making changes to procedure, city law, Deerfield Beach charter. To avoid the appearance of old self, Florida dealing, this provision should only apply to new Commissioners elected to the commission in order to avoid the apparent internal riot, failing to do that with forever tarnished reputation by the entire commission in the city of Deerfield Beach. Thank you for your time.
I'm here to say that it's the right of the people to vote. Isn't it our right to vote? And I agree that as the people should vote.
Thank you.
Jane Schaffler, forty-eight, northeast, nineteenth terrace. Unfortunately, I was not a Florida resident in two thousand and six, so I didn't get to vote then on this issue. But I oppose term limits for our local officials. Do we really want to limit the choices of voters? If voters want to keep electing officials, we're doing a fabulous job. We, the voters, should have a right to make that decision. Why punish elected officials for hardworking, competent, skilled, experienced, valuable representatives of our city? And why punish voters and deprive us of our democratic right to elect people we believe are doing a great job? I feel that term limits are arbitrary and unwise, period. I applaud this amendment, and I am forward to voting for it on the ballot. Thanks.
Good evening. Your respect, one eighty, Southwest Third Avenue. Mayor, you said that you stayed for sixteen years. And before that, you was in the same audience fighting for the right of the people out west. And then you were elected and you stayed at the commission, eight years, and then you came home and became Mayor, but not home, eight years. And I think that should be what everybody else does. Stay those eight years. After that, if you see where you can give more benefits to this city, then run for Mayor. I think it would help all of us out, because we don't need God sitting up here. We don't need kings and queens sitting up here. We start spending too much time. We won't take ownership. And we, the people, still own Deerfield Beach. I'm so glad to come from one of those families that's been here over a hundred and two years. So I can truly say that I would love it. We just keep it. And I believe Alicia asked the question that, could somebody else do what ones are doing on the N P O? I think, yes. As you always talk, others can be taught. I think we have a right to make sure that the residents get proper information. And if you educate your district, I believe we will come out with quality, leaving the charge. All it takes is some education. All it takes is you give the people what is given to you. Even for tonight's meeting, this thing come out the correct way. So how will the voters be educated on this, when we don't have proper information? We need to be educated. Even tonight, look. We still in up and down on this. Because even the champion of it don't have it all to give to the people. And we do need some part of education on this totality. You're talking about bringing four more years. Why? It's one of the biggest questions. And I did hear someone say, "Yes, it's not broken. Why we gonna fix it now? So we can set up and look like they're doing things illegal?" You better look at it. Look at it, and look at it in good fashion. Thank you.
Good evening. Diane Chisholm, three seven five, Northwest Seventh Court, Deerfield Beach. I'm really for the voters. I am not against any plan that's designed to specifically help any individual. Because in my world, what I do is, I ask the employees, everyone, in their own specific places, write your task, so that if you were hit by a car tomorrow, anyone could pick up your task and try and find their way. So that may be something that we want to do, is to write the things down that's super important to us, so that we can pass them on. And I would also like to think that, in this beautiful city of Deerfield Beach, do you really need a title to continue to help this city? If there was someone that wasn't in the chair at this time, and your fellow man, a woman, were to come about and sit in your position, and these beautiful meetings are held, and I know all about the sunshine, and you can't talk here, and you can't talk there, but when you're in the public, you can talk to anyone you want. So I would think that if there is someone to get put in a specific seat, because we love the city that we live in, and we will do whatever it takes to continue to make the city function, I would like to recommend that we volunteer our services and help those who are in the chair that may not have been there the last time. I am totally, totally against making term limits that specifically is designed to help any one or two individuals, or even three. I think that the system that we have now work, but I do agree with Terry that education, I think, is the thing that's missing here. And I would like to ask our diets if there's something we can do to help educate our communities. I think that would be extremely beneficial. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Ms. Chul?
Yes.
You signed the petition. You're the number five person on here, including someone else in your household, saying that you were for this.
Absolutely, no. I wanted to say that to start out. You're absolutely right, and you made the comment in the beginning, that there are people who sign petitions that don't know what they're even signing. What I was told when I signed that petition is that we would like to have a city know that we want to have a vote, and whether or not we want this petition.
What do you think we're deciding on right now?
Well, I think you said...
That's what we're doing.
Oh, I'm sorry then, my, my, my...
The commission is not voting themselves an extra term.
Okay, now that's what I was...
That's what happens with people that listen to Facebook and people that don't know what they're talking about.
Well, this is why I was gonna say to you, one of the things was that people do sign petitions when they are misled at times, or maybe just not understanding. But I am definitely for the voters speaking as to what it is that they want. So that clarification is well made. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so everybody's clear, the commission is not voting to give themselves another term. It's that simple. I think, quite frankly, I think we'd all have a free mission to sustain if that was the issue. This is about giving the voters, I think what's being presented, is to give the voters the right to vote on it through referendum, and if they want to change it. It's not the commission. I don't care if anyone tells you that or flat out uninformed. The commission does not have... The commission does not have the ability to change the charter to do that. We didn't have the ability to change the charter on a myriad of things that were cited back in two thousand and six. We don't have the ability to do that now. It's that simple. The only people that can are you. That's it. Us, as a group, as a community, we all get to vote on it. So just in case there's someone else who's gonna come up here to speak, and I don't, I'm embarrassing Ms. Chisholm at all. It's about, I don't mean to if I did, certainly, but I did notice your name up here, so I was a little confused. And it's very clear what you signed, so that's why I was confused, but we are not voting to do that, despite what anyone else says. That's not the case. Mr. City Attorney, is that accurate?
Correct. The commission does not have that authority.
All right, my name is Pam Penter, forty forty one, first Jake.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Sure.
You, you can drop your desk.
Okay. My name is Pam Penter, forty forty one, Linter's Jake. I strongly believe it's up to the voters to decide this matter, not politicians. Many neighboring cities have three term lengths. I want it to be so that the people will be able to vote on this change, the city charter. Please put this proposal on the ballot, whether you like the idea or not. Let the voters make the decision on the term limits. Thank you.
May Francis Satan. Third five hundred northwest southwest on the tour of the park, Deerfield Beach. I'm totally against what you're speaking about. Every frog, my mother always told me, every frog places on me and that. When you think you're the special one. All of us have the ability to learn, maybe some learn differently. So we all have the ability to learn. As far, my family's been in the center of Deerfield since nineteen forty seven. Right down to the street until the city and DOT decided they want to back up. So with that being said, we have the ability to learn. A lot of us have been here. We have been here. We're not transported here. We were here. We have to build this city. And Deerfield is unique. We have had integration when immigration come along. We had whites and blacks, even on other side of the railroad tracks as well, so on this side, southwest side. So Deerfield is unique and different. So we thank you and we do not want, we want the ability to do what is right. They have the ability to vote for what we want and see right for our community.
Anyone else in the audience?
Hi, Darryl Brown, two six two, Farm K Deerfield. Overall, I have my own opinion of listening to what everybody said while sitting here. I see both sides. But I look at the bottom line, for me, the bottom line is giving the choice to the vote. And in the long run, the voters will decide whether they want to extend term limits to a third term or keep it as is to two terms. But it goes initially to the voters if it's put on the ballot come November. And I think whatever answer we come up with, that will be, that, that will tell us right there. If it should stay or should it be extended to a third term. And I'd like it to, to be put on the ballot. Thank you.
No, that's relax, we all go ahead.
Chris Moreno, fifteen twenty five, Southwest fourteen court. The proposed limit, just to clarify, are we talking about a third term?
Third term.
Only a third term.
Okay.
So I'm a younger person than the average century village age, but I'm here because I care too. The, as far as the voters are concerned, I feel our voters in Deerfield Beach have made a decision on this subject in two thousand and six. And we paid for it at that time. And we're about to pay for it again, thirty four thousand dollars for our hard earned state money. So I can't see spending the thirty four thousand dollar expense for a decision that we wanted to make. If it's not broke, don't fix it approach, I take that here. And I do, I do feel that an advisory board on the Tenth Street project should be in place. And they can advise any new state officials going forward on that if we properly place an advisory board.
We have one that just shows that you have no clue what's going on over there, so we'll get you up to speed, but yeah, we've been doing that for seven plus years, twelve years.
Or I had.
Were you in office?
I'm not doing what the other residents say, that that advisory board can certainly.
Most of them are dead, yes.
Well, there you have, well, well, then if they're dead, is the board in place?
It was.
Okay, so we should have an advisory board in place to support any people. Okay, very good. All right. So for tonight, I'd be a no, and I support the decision, sorry, we paid our creeps, right?
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Chisholm. Anyone else inside here? I have more on my, Mr. Adams?
Yes, greetings. Deerfield residents overwhelmingly voted for term limits in nineteen ninety three. According to then news reports, allegedly they were tired of the then mayor serving twelve years. The voter spoke in nineteen ninety three. Then the so-called dream team were the first commission to serve under term limits. Then in nineteen ninety seven, all five commissioners were reelected. So now the second term is coming to a close in two thousand and one. And here comes the excuses of whining about not wanting all the commissioners and their experience to leave office at one time and leaving the city in hands of newcomers. So then in two thousand and one, the new con to sidestep term limits and circumvent the will of the voters was collecting petition signatures. These Deerfield politicians never played fair, so this new con lasted until two thousand and six. Fast forward up to two thousand and six, when the voters grew weary again and eliminated the exemption that allowed commissioners to sidestep term limits by collecting petition signatures. The voters also agreed to stagger terms. Now fast forward twelve years till two thousand twenty one. And now term limited District Three Commissioner Barney Parnas asked the city attorney to draft an ordinance for the November two thousand twenty two ballot to change term limits again. Parnas was asked by Commissioner Drosky, can we ask your intent? Are you saying you want a charter change that would apply to me, you and the mayor? Yes, Parnas replied, the board has done a hell of a job. Voters have the right to say whether it's a good idea or not. The bullshit never changes here in Deerfield Beach.
Mr. Adams, you're better than that. You're like with your mask.
It just continues on into a different decade. As I stated earlier, these Deerfield politicians never play fair. I remember Mayor Gantz once telling me, when he was a commissioner around ten years ago, that being a commissioner or mayor is not a lifetime job. Finally, the optics doesn't look right on the February fifteenth, two thousand twenty two least discussion and vote. It seemed to me that Commissioner Parnas, Hudek, and Preston had the votes. And all of a sudden, it seems the mayor and Commissioner Drosky convinced Commissioner Parnas to switch his vote. Parnas abruptly changed his mind and said, as much as I like this project, I will change my vote. Let the people decide. Now, two weeks later, Commissioner Parnas' ordinance on term limits out of nowhere appears on the March first, two thousand twenty two agenda. It's always about optics and they look suspicious to me. Again, Franklin D Roosevelt once said in politics, nothing happens by accident. It happens, if it happens, you can bet it was planned that way. I asked the commission to vote no for putting term limits on the ballot for a third time. The voters have spoken. Everyone keeps saying, let the voters. No, I can, just give me a few more seconds. The voters have spoken in nineteen ninety three and two thousand and six. Please respect it, and I'm sorry for, for BS. I, I was reading a letter. It had BS, not what I said, so excuse me for that. I'm, I am really sorry for that.
That's what happens, you read other people's words and it gets messed up there, so what's up?
And no, I'm reading my own words.
I knew you were better on that, Ms. Adams. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have Kitty Freitag.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, fellow constituents. Many people do not know that this was going to be on the agenda tonight. Bernie, Commissioner Parnas, if you had asked me on Saturday night, I would have signed your petition that I am against this choice. It was interesting when you came over to Ben Gwendolin's ear about this, but it was funny that you didn't ask me. I'm not surprised that you had so many signatures on your petition, because of course, I'm sure you asked all of your friends. Excuse me, I lost my place for one second. We do not need additional terms for commissioners that are not attending all city events. We do not need terms for commit, for additional terms for commissioners who are voting on things for the entire city, but never leave their district. There's a reason for staggered terms so that not all five seats on the dais are replaced at the same time. I have a running joke with city staff about where I park at city events. Everybody knows. If the events, if the projects that are not finished, such as Southwest Tenth. Um, street, which has been going on for years, why does the information disappear when the commissioner changes? That particular project has been going on for so many years that two terms, three terms is not going to make a difference. How much is this going to cost the city? And is this not monies that could be used in a much better area such as our parks and wrecks, our streets, our subs, our uh, substructures? Can we not spend that money better elsewhere? And just look at one particular person on the dais right now. Vice Mayor Ben Preston ran for office, was a commissioner, ran for office, lost the commission, came back and ran again and won it. It is possible to do that, and that is the reason that we have the staggered terms. It's the reason that we have the situation where you can come back and be commissioner again four years later. There's no reason to have three terms in a row. The election, that, that, this is the democracy that Deerfield has. It is what we need now and it's what we need every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Gwen Clark Reed?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Gwen Clark Reed, fourteen thirty, Southwest Sixth Way. Uh, term limits were, are put in for a specific reason. And I don't think that, uh, some of us are grasping exactly what is going to happen when with these term limits. If you are going to say that the commissioners who are, are up for office in the next election will be able to establish another term, meaning that they would be there for twelve years, I don't think that's right. I think that, uh, we need to leave the term limits the way they are. Two terms of four years is sufficient, I think, for any commissioner to get his or her job done. I want to hear, as Commissioner Drosky said, he hasn't heard from his constituents. I don't think any of the commissioners have really heard from their constituents about this, and they all need to hear from them. Commissioner Parnas, at this time, I cannot support your, um, ordinance for putting it on the, on the ballot. I want to hear what happens at the next meeting, at the second reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, anyone else from the public? So a lot more people here that have not spoken. I see you online speaking, you're not here, shape on you. That's your opportunity. I'm gonna close it to the public. Commissioner Hudek and Commissioner Parnas.
I have a question for the city attorney, and maybe my information or how I'm reading the charters is inaccurate. Um, from what I understand, a commissioner is allowed a term limit of two consecutive terms. Now, I believe if there is a, if, if you leave office and wait four years, you can run again. Is that accurate or not?
That is correct, Commissioner Hudek. The, the restriction is eight consecutive years.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you very much, sir.
But to your point, I could, when my term expires, I could run for District Four for another four years. Since it's a different term.
You, you as mayor, yeah, I think.
Yes.
The charter. Charter, right.
Not saying it is, 'cause sixteen years, tired. It's exhausting. Yeah, but honestly, seriously, for those trying to say this is the way to stay in office, I can run again. I'll take on anybody. That would, I'd love that. My God, I would love that. But I will tell you this. It'd be fun. We'd have a good time. But I will tell you this, um, when it comes to term limits like that, look, uh, yeah, it rotates out. I'm, and I'm jumping ahead, Commissioner Hudek, 'cause I know, I don't know if you had any other questions, 'cause I think your question's answered, but I'm gonna say this. I brought up Tenth Street as an example. It's comical, I have to admit, and insulting for the people that have worked on that for so long, say, well, maybe we should have a committee. I'm not trying to say you're intentionally to that, and I'm not singling individuals out. And to say, well, that knowledge couldn't be transferred. Seven years of sitting in a meeting. When you've been to every single meeting that's been going on for seven years, and I'm talking individual community meetings, small community meetings, putting together your own task force, sitting on an MPO task force for years. That knowledge certainly can be transferred, but it is that when you're standing in a room, you're having the wool pull over your eyes by FPT. And I can go back and say, wait a minute, you told us back here, I was in the room. That's a lot different. Someone coming in and saying, well, I was told this, they're not gonna know. Of course, information will be transferred, and some of us have been fighting it long before we're in office, while some of you were at home, will continue to do that. It's not that, you don't invest seven years of your life and do a project like that and let it go to the wayside 'cause you're out of office. It was merely meant to be an example of the lack of institutional knowledge that happens anywhere you're at. If you run a major company and you use people, lose people that have been there for years, we lose one of our city employees that's been here for thirty years. They can tell you what has worked before, what has failed before, and what not to repeat. That happens. So before you try to make it out like Tenth Street and there's a way to do it, it's not that simple, and let's not be broken. There is a loss of knowledge. You can't make it, an, an, an argument against that that makes any sense without embarrassing yourself. So let's not make it that I'm trying to bring up Tenth Street as the only thing. I just use that as an example. But it's back to the points on that. Certainly, we have the ability to transfer knowledge. We know that. We do. Commissioner Hudek, did you want to complete your statements?
I did. I definitely want to complete my statements. What the public. When I got to office, the, the one thing that surprised me more than any is how few people in this city are actually engaged in our city. We have eighty seven thousand residents, and there's probably less than fifty people who really take ownership of this city. And I, I'm talking about the people who are actually on this, in the, the, uh, the city hall right now and, and, and on the Zoom right now. We have eighty seven thousand people, and I would say that forty percent of the people on this call are city staff. And the rest of the individuals are, are, are the residents who put forth the time and the energy to make this city run. And you don't understand the, the time commitment for the individuals on the dais. The, the, the passion that we have for this city. And the, the challenge that the city faces is, is to find replacements for us, because this isn't a job that, that you do, you know, three hours on a Tuesday. This is a, a full-time job if you do it right. And yes, so residents may say, well, this commissioner doesn't go to, to that event or to, or to this event. But that commissioner is also building relationships within the political community. Um, we have Commissioner Mark Bogan here today. And, and, and he's here because one of our commissioners has a relationship with him that he's built over the years. If that commissioner leaves, he can pass all the knowledge he wants on to the new commissioner. But it's the relationships that we build based on the hours that we put forth for this job, for this community and for this city. And that's something that, that is missing. And that's something that, that is missing in this whole dialogue. The other thing that's missing is we're elected officials. We don't appoint ourselves. So if we're not doing a good job, our residents can vote us out. It's not like this is a, a king or, or a dictator, like you've got in other countries that are invading Ukraine. We are elected officials, and if we're not doing a good job, if you're not happy with the job that we're doing, guess what? In four years, we're gone, and you've got a new individual. And what this proposal is, is asking, is to give it the right of the voters to see if you want to keep the individuals who have put the time forth, who have the knowledge and have the passion for this city an extra four years, and that's what you have to think about. And if you really don't want to do that, then step up to the plate and run for office. You'll find it's not as easy as you think. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Parnas.
Thank you. Let me say something from what I've heard from a lot of the people that spoke that are against this. The people spoke. Well, the people spoke when we wrote the original charter. Why did we change it and put term limits in? You say, oh, the charters, why change it? They changed it. Why did they change it? Because the voters decided they wanted to. That was what, 14 years ago? Times change. Why do most of the cities, two-thirds of all the cities in Broward, either have no term limits or three? Ask yourself that, because the voters in those cities decided it was a good idea. I'm not telling you whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. We are still a democracy. This is something the voters should decide. All I'm asking is, put it on the ballot, let the voters speak. What is wrong with having the voters speak?
Now, is there an echo out there? Please stop.
Second. I hear, well, it's a dynasty. Well, let me tell you, three of the five of us sitting here had to beat incumbents in order to get here. So much for dynasties. Ben Preston beat Gloria Battle. You beat Gene Robb, am I correct?
No, timed it.
Huh?
Timed it.
You timed it. Okay. I beat Richard Rosenzweig, not once, but twice. They were incumbents. There's no guarantee. There's no guarantee if I ran for third term, and I haven't made a decision. I'm not a kid. What, how's my health going to be in three years? How's my mental ability going to be in three years? I don't have an answer. But if I am healthy, and my voters in my district want me to run for a third term, the voters should make that decision, not politicians. All we're asking to do is put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. What is wrong with that? If it's not broke, don't fix it? No, it's giving the voters the opportunity to voice what they want, not what we want, what they want. Nobody here has told me what's wrong with that idea of bringing an item in front of the voters for their decision. That's all this says, is to put it on the ballot, let the voters decide. In a democracy, that's how it's done. In a dictatorship, that's not how it's done. I don't think we've become a dictatorship yet. And people say, well, let's say, why are you going to change it? If we never changed the charter, there'd be no term limits, because in the original charter, there wasn't any. How did we get term limits? The voters decided that. How did we stagger the elections so all five didn't disappear in one shot? The voters decided that. So the charter's been changed many times with the times. As we go on, over the years, there will be changes to the charter. This is one that the public will either say, I like the idea, or I don't want the idea. So what I'm asking this commission to do is to move this forward and let you, the public, decide. It's not decided tonight. We're not voting on whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, whether 10th Street will carry on or not carry on if three of us leave at one time. Probably in three years, our budget will be around $250 billion, and we'll probably have over 90,000 residents in Deerfield. I don't know about you, but I don't like the idea that 60% of this commission is gone in one day. Gone. And if the voters agree with that, they don't, at the present rate, they don't have an opportunity to say, we'd like to keep that commission at least for a while. They don't have that opportunity now. Yet two of them ran unopposed. Nobody dared run against Bill or Todd Rotsch, because they knew they couldn't win. So they didn't even try, because they've done a good job. Who decided that? Not Bill, not Todd, the voters. Think about that. Think about the opportunity for you, the voters, to make a decision as to the charter and how many terms this commission can have. And there's no guarantees. That's what people don't understand. Let's assume I wanted to run for a third term. Some bright young star comes along and beats me. Happens all the time. What if I decide not to run? Was it my age, my health? It doesn't affect anything, but if I'm healthy and want to run, I'm saying, let the voters decide yes or no. Put it on the ballot, let the voters vote. Period. This is too important to say, well, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Obviously, it was broke, because the charter's been changed more than once. So why can't it be changed again if the voters want it to change? If they don't want to change, they'll vote to keep it the way it is. But I'll sleep better at night knowing that the voters decided this, not this commission. The only way this commission can stop you from voting on it is by not allowing it on the ballot, by voting no. I say, let the voters decide. And Ben, incidentally, 50% of the names I've turned in, I'll be, out of the 168, happen to come from District Two, because in talking to some people, they said, I'd like to go out and canvass our neighborhood. And they got yeses. They didn't have any no's. People said, let the voters decide. My district as well. So what is the problem with letting voters make the decision? $34,000? It's less than a dollar a voter. Are the, our voters not worth that? To give them the opportunity to tell us which direction to take? Again, we have over 49,000 voters in Deerfield. Of course, it's 34,000 to put it on the November ballot. Now, people ask, why the November ballot? I'll give you a reason. If we put it on the primary ballot, of course, it'd probably be the same, except independent voters don't get to vote. Non-party affiliates don't get to vote in primaries, so more than half the city wouldn't be able to vote. If we waited till March, it's very expensive. Why? Because next March, two districts are voted on, not the whole city. But this is an item for the whole city, so we'd have to pay to open all the precincts in the city to allow everybody to vote, with a cost of over $130,000. But if we put it on the November ballot, the whole city's covered, every precinct is covered, and it should be a decent turnout, because there's a fight for Senate, the governor, Congress, and it's the cheapest way to do it. What I'm asking you to do is put it on the ballot, let the voters speak. That's what makes America great, the ability to vote. You can vote yes, you can vote no, or you can stay home. Those are your three choices. I'm asking this commission to give you that choice.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor Preston.
You, you said, Commissioner, that a lot of, my, my respect, candidates, a lot of people wasn't supportive of this. But let me also tell you that people that did call me are not in support of it. That's one. And two, I've got calls from other districts as well that was not in support of this. Now, let me say this. The Constitution of the United States has been amended. The Constitution of the United States is what we live by. That's, that's what, that's what makes us, we are. It's what defines us, and there were times that it had to be amended. You know when that happened? It's when they saw a problem. It was that the Constitution itself was unfairly hurting its own, discriminating against its own. And so people that were in office saw a need to be able to amend the Constitution of the United States, and they did so. I've heard here so many people say tonight, let the people decide. Let the people decide. Well, are we going to move past that? Because the people have already decided. We would first have to say, the reason that that needs to go on the ballot, and I have no problem with that, if there was a problem, what's the problem? Just the fact that we can say, put it on the ballot, so we can, can, can vote on it? That is, at that point, politicians tinkering with it. We're tink, we're playing with it at that moment, and we don't need to do that. This is a solution searching for a problem. There is no problem. Leave it alone. If there was really some sort of an issue, where there was some sort of isolation, and people were pouring out and saying, hey, we need to move on this, and I would say, this is something we've got to look at. But what's the problem? It's just, just that you were saying, then let's put it on the, on, on the ballot and let people decide. Other than you saying that, what's the problem? Okay, what's the problem? Okay, there have not been an outcry from the public to say, the way that, that our charter reads now, there is a distinct problem, and that warrants change. There is no problem. There is a people, there's been no outcry from the public. This was brought up by a commissioner. Nobody from the, from the, that I was contacting said, that's a problem, and we need to address it. This is, this is actually politicians looking at it and saying, let the people decide. But the people already decided, and it's been moving, and it's been moving in a positive manner. If there was a, 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 an issue that needs to really be discussed, we as elected officials ought to be able to look at those kinds of things. But when we say that the people decide, we're actually stepping over the main fact, and that is that the people have already decided. That's a fact. The people have already decided.
One of the problems that I see, and there's a possibility that in 2025, three of the commissioners are term limited. The other two could be beaten in an election. Now you've got a whole new board with a $250 million budget and no knowledge. It takes a year for some of these people to find a men's room in City Hall. Some, some people ran for one term, and then voters said, what a mistake, and they threw them out, because somebody knew. And as far as the Constitution of the United States, if I recall, amendments are decided by Congress, and then the state's legislatures, not the people, the state's legislatures confirm it by a two-thirds vote of their own legislature to ratify it. The people don't get to vote on constitutional amendments in the United States. But here we have an opportunity to let the people decide whether they want to change or not. Is there a need? We could have gone back to the original and had no term limits. Why did we change the charter then? What was the need? What was the absolute need for them to change the charter? They made a decision. The people made a decision to change it. And I'm asking to let the people decide whether they want to change. Period. That's a democracy. Let the people decide. People say, well, I'm for it, I'm against it. Against what? Against giving it to the voters to vote on? That's all we're deciding here. Whether or not they should have the opportunity to say yes or no. Then if we pass this, we got until November to sell your, I'm against it because, or mine, I'm for it because, and then the voters make a decision. What is wrong with democracy? That's how it works, and that's what I'm for. I'm sorry. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. It wasn't broke in the first place, but we fixed it, because the voters changed it. There was a time when women couldn't vote in this country. They can now.
Stop. Thank you.
I'm all for letting the people vote on changing the charter or not. That'll happen with the merits, not because of me, or you, or Bill, or Todd, or Mike. On the merits of whether or not the public wants to allow a good commissioner or mayor to have a third term, not unlimited, like 10 of the cities in Deerfield, Broward County, and the other 10 have three terms. 20 out of the 31 have three or more terms. Are they all wrong? I don't think so. I think they, the public, have a right to make that decision, not us. I can live with whatever they decide. If they decide two terms, that's it, throw them out, fine. This is 2022. I want to see the voters do it. I want to see the voters have an opportunity to be sold yes or no, and go to the ballot box and give their opinion, because that, to me, is what counts, the voters. I'm not afraid of the voters. I applaud those who come and vote. In fact, I've set up voter registration drive. In fact, you and I discuss it. It's being done in your district as well as mine, to get people to vote. No, Ben, vote. So I am all for the voters, and that's all this is, an opportunity for the voters to speak. If I'm off-base, the voters will vote no. And if the voters think it's a good idea, it'll be yes. And it has nothing to do with any individual wanting to run for a third term or not running for a third term, and even if you do run for a third term, you should be beat. You beat somebody, I beat somebody when we ran. Why? Because the voters made that decision. No politicians. The voters. They put us in office, and this is an issue that belongs to them. That's my field. What am I asking you to do? Let the voters have a say. I could go out and get another 500 signatures. You know what? Don't mean squat. When the election comes, those that feel passionate enough to take up the issue will either vote yes or no. I want to give them that opportunity, and that's what I'm asking this commission to do. Give the voters the opportunity to say yes or no on changing the charter to allow for a third term. Period. No politics involved. No politics involved. You don't know if you're going to run for another term. I don't know at this point, three years from now, if I'm going to run again. Who knows if I'll be alive in three years? I can't think that far ahead at my age. But I want them to have that opportunity. Because we have a lot of younger members on this commission. And if they do a good job, and the voters would like them to have one more term, I think they should have a say whether it's possible or not. What's wrong with that idea? What is wrong with letting the voters make a decision? Giving them an opportunity to study the issue and say, good idea, bad idea? What's wrong with that? We do the same thing here as a commission. And I heard the person said, well, I changed my mind. Yes, I did. Why? Because under the sunshine, all the five of us can't individually. I couldn't talk to Bill about why he thought it was a bad idea. And I couldn't talk to Todd, who thought we could do better, until we were here at the commission. I was all set to vote for it. Now I'll tell you something I told Bill. The next day after we voted, I got a call from the developer. He said, wouldn't it be nice if the referendum said we could sell the land, and I put up a 20-story Marriott Hotel Resort on that property? Wouldn't that be nice? Gee whiz, they're willing to bid on that land and do something that'll bring us taxes for 50 years or 80 years instead of a dollar a year for 80 years and $3 million upfront. When I went home after that Wednesday morning, when I got a call from the developer, I said, you know what? Voting no is the right idea for me. Bill and Todd convinced me here that that wasn't the best deal for the city. I could be wrong, I could be right, but that's how I felt. And that, that's the difference. We vote, we vote our conscience. We vote what we feel is best for the city. They should have the same rights. And that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for you to push this along, let the voters decide. And I agree with Todd. I will withdraw putting it on the, uh, agenda until the following meeting in April, so you have a chance to really talk to your constituents. And I can talk to mine. And so can everybody else to get a consensus before the final vote. I'm not asking you to approve three terms, or take away terms, or no terms. I'm just asking you to let the people decide. Put it on the ballot. Let's hear what they have to say. And why am I confident? The people that came here tonight spoke. Most of them were for it. A few were against it. We're not taking a poll here, don't mean anything till it goes to the ballot. But they threw it enough to come here and speak both for and against. With that, if there's nobody else, I'll put a motion on the floor.
I, I, I want to respond.
Go ahead, please do.
No, I'm going to ask the mayor, not you. The mayor, the mayor is okay?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. First of all, you know, Commissioner, you're wrong in saying that the people don't get a chance to, uh, amend the Constitution. We don't live in a democracy. We live in a republic.
Yes, I know.
Okay, you said a democracy. But anyway, I don't, you, 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 the republic meaning that you have elected people that you can go to to be your representative, that's what that is. And many of the things that have been amended in the Constitution started from the people who told their representative, this is what we want, or this is wrong. It goes up the, the ladder until it gets to the Congress. And then if it's approved, then the House, it goes to the Senate. And if this comes out of the Senate as approved, then there's a bill. That's how the process works. So it's inaccurate to say that the people don't have a say in what happens in the Constitution. Simply not true. The people have a say. That's what makes America different, is this, is the people who decide these issues. You don't have a bunch of congressmen and senators up there making laws and doing things without consulting the people. That's almost a dictatorship, or some form of it. The people in this country have elected officials. And those elected officials in the republic has to answer to the concerns of, of their constituents. And that's how it works in this process. Again, you said you want the people to, you know, to have a say on this, and you want them to vote on it. My issue is that this has already been in place. We don't have a problem. Give me a problem. Show me what's going wrong. Why should we change it? And that, and you still have not provided an answer for that. Other than you want the people to be able to, to, to vote on it. This is politicians tinkering with something that maybe I don't like it. And if I could get people to go along with it, now I can change it. If there's a real problem, something that's not working for the people, something that is, is, is just, you know, as far as our charter is concerned, just not right. It affects one group of, you know, the way that we do it disproportionately to one group than another. This is a process that right now, eight years, is working. It's working. And I don't think anybody wants, you know, you look at this commission, and there is an argument to be made that this commission has been progressive. It has done some very good things. And, you know, the city of Deerfield Beach is better off. There's no doubt about that. But just how we grew, and the way that we grew, and we did things for the, for the city, other people can do the same things. We're not unique in that. And the minute we began to overexaggerate our own importance to something, is where we start to fail. We're not that important. We're just people that came to office and were serving. And actually, in reality, that's all that we are. We're not geniuses. We're not these awesome people. We're just simply servants. That's it. And just as we are servants, there are other people out there that can do a good job, just like we've done. There is no problem with the correct method. Okay, so the method, the motives that surrender for change, I don't see it. I just don't see it. And I think that sometimes when we say that the public, you know, you know, you've got guys that have, you know, you've got a big budget. You made an allusion to that, a big budget, you know, all of us, I'm, no, I'm going to tell you. There's a lot that I know about it, but when I don't, uh, when I have questions, you know what I do? I call the city manager. I call the finance officer. And I tell you, they would do the same thing. Okay? They would do the same thing. I think it's, it's not a good idea for us to put ourselves in a position where we speak down to the people. That's kind of our two. You know, just, we got to make sure that they are included in the process, and they're just as good as we are. They're just as good as we are. And that must be interpreted as such that they know that these guys are serving. I guarantee that most of the people, they must say, we've done a great job. There's no doubt about it. But do we need to go to 12 years? I think not.
Why not be restricted to four?
Because you, listen, listen, we have to have some sensibility. We have to have some sensibility. Four years is simply not enough. Our, our president, the president of the United States, has given four years. Then he does bring up job, he gets eight. But he's not like, uh, Putin, or the leader from, uh, from China, where you just get to serve and serve and serve. The American president's got eight years to make his case. That's it.
How many years can a congressman run?
If you're in the House too.
Excuse me, not the state, federal. None, they can run forever.
Well, we're, we're not talking about term limits. There's term limits here. I'm talking about eliminating term limits. You're talking about extending term.
One, one term, right.
Keep that within, within the context.
The US Senate is saying we've no term limits. So, you know.
I, I think we're better served sticking to the points of the argument here, as far as getting, getting outside track on it.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'm going to say this. Uh, if, if this moves forward, then I ask for two things to be put forward that. One, if you're going to add a third, that you eliminate the possibility, because really, quite frankly, there is a scenario in which there are no term limits. I can run again for District 4, or I don't know. You can run for mayor.
I could.
And if you go back to District, it, it's that cycle. If you're going to move this forward, allow the voters to have a say on it. Let them have a say on that loophole that's there. It's not necessarily a problem that exists right now, or necessarily a problem. I think it's elected officials, if you have the ability, if you should have the ability to go back and look at something and say, you know what? That probably needs to be adjusted. And I think that was a miss that was put in when the charter was changed that shouldn't allow some of, as, as Mr. Anderson talked about, and I believe that these positions up here should not be life-size positions. And I think there's a loophole in our, in our, uh, that exists that, you know, you've got 16 years of consecutive service, potentially, and that's it. You have to sit out a session before you come back. Because otherwise, you just have to sit and sleep. And that affects me directly. But, um, and this doesn't, because quite frankly, if I'm not mayor after this, if I decide I want to run for office, and I'll go for District 4, and I'm following the charter, that's exactly the way it could be. Like, like I said, 16 years is a really long time to sit up here. And I've got, and I'm not even at 16 years yet. When I'm done, it'll be 16 years, it's a long time. And, uh, I, I, I don't see myself going on beyond that. But I have no issue with us asking the public, is this what you want? And giving the ability to vote on it. I have a problem with paying $34,000 to ask that question. That's my issue. Now, when we voted for the fire department to, uh, merge with the ESO, and that was a decision made by the commission, not by the voters. That was by the commission, uh, because that's what we were allowed to do. Uh, I voted against that initially, when it said to, uh, to move that forward, because I felt the public had already spoken on that issue. And that wasn't true to the intended voting line. Eventually, I voted for the merger, but to even have that as a question for us to vote on, I voted against it because I felt the voters had already done. I lost that vote, so you have to vote on the next decision, which was whether we merged or not. But to even get to that point, I voted against it because the voters had made a decision. But the voters had made that decision less than eight years before that. To me, that's too soon to go back to the voters to ask how they felt, we made it very clear. Looking at this and realizing it's been 2006, you know, it doesn't, it's been 16 years since it was changed. Uh, if we're going to spend $34,000, uh, to ask voters if this is what they want, and, and I don't believe it's, it's what they want. But I will say, if you listen to the debate, you're not surprised. I didn't expect it to be as close as it was. And, and, and I, I look at this right here, and I, I, I look at the numbers. Uh, it tells me that maybe I'm missing something. I'm going to let the voters decide. It's not something that, you know, if you're going to say, well, it's going to benefit you, you're going to set up your role. Look, I can be running for office if I want to, the charter is now. That's not what the intent is, and that's not, I think the voters initially intended. This was set up, we'd like the officials to work all the way. So if we're going to move this forward and ask the public, and, and if we go forward with Commissioner Crosskey and Commissioner Partes has asked to move it forward, um, I'm going to insist that we add on there that we rectify something that is wrong with the charter, let the voters decide on it. Is, if they want that loophole and that allows them to just continually sit in the side step. Um, I think that needs to be adjusted because that breaks away from the true intent of a term limit, which is supposed to be on the mayor.
I, I, I like what you're saying. And I think that I personally could feel, uh, at least evaluate this a bit differently. If the public was bringing this to this commission, rather than a person sitting up here. I agree. Okay, so if the public was bringing this forward, I would, I can look at it a little bit differently. If this is brought forward, it should be brought forward by the people, not by a politician.
I, I agree with that. I, I, I do agree that to a situation certain of this, and I think it probably puts, certainly, I'll speak for myself and it makes me uncomfortable, uh, deciding on this. But in the end, I'm not deciding whether I go for it, because it's going to be the people who vote. What I am deciding on is whether or not we spend $34,000 to do that. And if we do it, and if that's the rule, this commission is to allow the people to vote on it, I want the people to have the ability to vote to, uh, decide whether they want that whole, whole team cycle.
I have no problem with that.
That, to me, we justify spending $34,000.
I have no, no problem with that. Not at all.
Commissioner, who that?
Um, this, this question is for a city attorney. Um, are tho, do those have to be two separate items on the ballot? Because they, they aren't, or, or can they be incorporated into one?
Well, I have to prepare the language, but I would anticipate that you would have two separate ballot questions. Yes.
That's what I'm figuring as well.
Yeah, it'd be a lot to pack into 75 words.
Which means it might not cost just $34,000. It'll be $42,000.
$42,000.
I'm sorry?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I think Commissioner Partes is going to make a motion.
Yes, I am. I make a motion. We approve this, the second reading. With the amendment.
Which, who?
Can I, can I just clarify your, your motion, please, Commissioner? So you, you're voting to, uh, approve this on first reading, and also, I guess, you direct the city attorney to prepare additional language with respect to, um, the loophole, um, issue that was mentioned by the mayor? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And to set this, this second reading and the public hearing for, uh, April 5th?
Fine. No problem with that.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and the second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yes, we'll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Huna?
Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes.
Okay. The next item is item number one on the agenda. It's a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, accepting the unsolicited proposal from GK Innovations LLC for the purchase of city-owned vacant lot at 171 Southwest 3rd Street, Deerfield Beach, for $50,000, authorizing the sale of city-owned vacant lot. Subject conditions, providing for execution effectively.
City manager, Mr. Power, in this moment. Or is he resting today?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, uh, Mr. Power does have a presentation for a sec.
One, Mr. Power is getting ready. Oh, sorry, sorry, Mr. Power. I just wanted to point out that pursuant to our code, this item would require a forfeit's vote for, uh, affirmative vote for adoption.
Good evening, Mayor. Power, you're in the office of Services City of Deerfield Beach. Next slide, please. So I'm going to just begin a brief presentation, and I'd like to begin by explaining the actual code section that we're using tonight. This is actually the first time that the City Commission has seen an application for this code section since it was approved by commission back in January 15, 2020. It was just before COVID, and I remember, none of us know, it happened before COVID, so I just wanted to remind you. Um, essentially, what the code section does is it allows for the city to sell, lease, or give, um, city-owned property under certain conditions. Uh, we have, uh, basically a, uh, threshold for someone that is less than $750,000 and more than $750,000. And then unsolicited and solicited. So solicited would be the city, you know, put out a call for someone who wants to purchase it. Unsolicited is we didn't ask the person, they submit the application. It's kind of important that it's unsolicited, right? So essentially, what the requirements are for the application themselves, the application is filled out. A 5% deposit of the gross purchase price is provided. The mayor is indicating the intention, uh, and appraisal of the property. Uh, and then we are required, some staff and review determine if this piece of land is something that we are willing, we're able to sell or to lease or to give. Do a internal survey, we do, uh, public notices, and we also post, um, in the newspaper, if you can take it. You can take it. So part of that as well is the city does appraisal itself. Go to the next slide. And just a discussion of this particular property, which is again, one seventy-one Southwest Third Street. So the applicant did submit back in November. They are proposing to construct one single-family home on this lot and is adjacent to a parcel that the applicant already owns, which has already received a building permit to construct one single-family home on that adjacent lot. So essentially, he is going to construct two single-family homes on these two vacant adjacent lots to each other. The applicant did propose the first price of thousand dollars. In a negotiation with the applicant, we requested he paid six thousand five hundred, which is what the city's appraisal of the value was, which the applicant agreed to. The proposed appraisal for his reduced seven hundred thousand dollars, ours was still less. And I just want to point out that in addition to the proposed price of the lot, then the applicant's also responsible for paying for, you know, building permit fees, engineering fees, impact fees, things of that nature, which could, you know, total to around twenty thousand dollars. And of course, because this was city property, which no tax was given to the government city. Now that a home was built, property taxes will therefore incur on the city, you know, probably starting next year. And that, of course, will be in perpetuity as long as, you know, there's a home on the property. And those assessed values for that first year are somewhere to be, you know, two thousand five hundred dollars, around three thousand dollars, you know, depending on how those taxes work for next year. The next slide? This is the point that the, you know, the property owner is really going to be paying more to the city than what this purchase price is going to be. And reality, the first development property and the fact that, you know, the city will receive income afterwards and pay taxes. This is just a, a scan shot of where the location is. You can see it's South Hillsboro, West Coast Highway, east of Southwest Third. Go to the next slide real quick, a little bit further in. You can see that's the vacant property. If you look just to the right of the vacant property, that's the property that the gemma already owns and which they're going to construct a second one. And I think with that, that's the last slide. And I'm happy to answer your questions. The applicant answers a lot.
That's okay. I'm not a hard, you know, they're ridiculous. I still have Commissioner Goodak's hand raised. That's all right. Commissioner Goodak, did you want to speak inside?
I, I did. So what happens if this individual just leaves it as a vacant lot? Fences it in and it's for his dog?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Goodak. So the application, the resolution that we provided, does have a revuer clause. So essentially, you guys have twelve months to obtain a building permit, eighteen months to actually receive a CO. In that process, does have the ability to request additional time if it wasn't on a permit or its active or limited nature. But as I've already spoken to the applicant, he already has a building permit that was approved for an adjacent lot. The same building plans to get another lot. It's actually very quick for him to issue a building permit.
And if he doesn't say what he's going to do, what happens?
Then at the end of that time period, the land will go back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Did other, the applicant, were there other people that applied to this?
No, during the public notice process, it received a few inquiries about the location and exactly what was requested by City District Four.
And was it, was it the information to apply? Was that, was that available to them?
Yes, well, our application is available on the website, and people who didn't wire were granted.
Any other Commissioner Collins, where I open it to the public? Not seeing any of them. Close it. Well, open it to the public. Wait, part read?
Yes, Gwen Clark Reed, fourteen thirty, Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield. If the property was appraised at fifty-six five, why didn't we sell it for fifty?
For not.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
The presentation, the presentation has said that they've agreed to pay the amount of the appraisal.
So just to clarify, the appraisal that the city conducted, of course, didn't occur until after the application was submitted. So the application from the applicant was for a thousand dollars. When the city received the appraisal that was slightly higher, you know, you can speak to the applicant, he agreed to pay that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that Kitty Friedtag?
Katie Friedtag, four eighteen Southeast Second Street. My, I have two questions. One, how did the city come to own this property? And two, who owns the property next to it? On the other side, the other vacant lot? Is that not something, is that also owned by the city? Or is that owned by somebody else? And if it's owned by the city, would it not behoove us to sell both lots together as a combined bigger package instead of individually? Thank you.
Can I go back to the previous slide?
Yes, please, Heather.
Sorry. There's a, Heather. Go back to that last slide. To answer the first question, part of the notification process is that all the adjacent property owners are notified by mail of intention to sell the lot. I believe, I'm sorry, you had it there. So I believe the lot that Mr. Friedtag was referring to was the property, the vacant land to the right, as I was just stating, that the applicant purchased that property last year and already received a building permit to build one single-family home on that lot. So that's what's called the vacant lot. Who was the question?
Yes, I believe that was the question. Do you have any other questions? If anyone else in the public here to speak? I do see our City Attorney, let's.
If there's nobody else from the public, Mayor?
I don't see who can write it on this.
Okay, great. I was just going to suggest, because it hasn't made it into the resolution, the updated figure that if the commission is desirous of approving the purchase that in the motion, you state the purchase price of fifty-six thousand five hundred. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's not what's written on the paper, but it is what Mr. Powers said in his presentation. So no one else came forward? I'm surprised because I heard there was chatter, and suddenly people became interested in this. People that I don't even think had planned for, which is part of the reason why I think we have this program in place, right?
That is correct. That, that the applicant has vetted with staff process to determine of what they're going, building for the property that's compatible for the land, that meets the requirements.
Right. So the purpose of this, the reason why we have this program is because we have odd parcels, parcels planned. As far as how that parcel plan gave the city possession, I don't know if we have the history of that.
I, that was the other question. I apologize. I don't know if I have a clear history of it, but I believe the property is heated to us. Most likely, the property had been, and then for some reason, taxes weren't paid, and then the property reverts basically to the city.
Right. So, so the point of this is we have these smaller parcels of land, like every city does. So how do we turn that into something that can enter on the tax roll? Certainly, that property is not something we can use as a market. It's not something we can use for public facility. It would make sense based on its size. But the whole goal of this program that we have in place and credit to our staff putting this together, we've had for a while. I think this is the first one that's done.
This is the first one.
Under this program, it allows for someone who actually owns the property next to it to maybe utilize that property to give us a bigger bag for their, bigger bag for their buck, a bigger bag for the taxpayers' buck, but they haven't do that. And it prevents knuckleheads from the outside, like I heard chatter about when I come forward and say, oh, I'm interested. No plan, no idea what they want to do, but they just want to buy a piece of property and sit on it and basically stymie progress. And I think they have the ability to do that, but they also have a certain right here. Is that correct?
That is correct. And so again, as this is an unsolicited proposal, you know, the process for public notification, which clearly works because we did receive inquiries, they would be allowed to submit an application, essentially show what their plan would be. And then we would actually treat that the same way we would treat a solicitor proposal, like an RFP, which presentations we've made admission for whoever submitted an application.
Yeah, so we've only received this one. We have the ability to, on the lot that they own right next to, adjacent to it, they want to make a thicker parcel.
No, they want to build two single-family.
Two single-family, no, it's not. So that's best way for us to utilize that space.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Partes?
Motion approved.
Is that with the purchase price of fifty-six thousand five hundred?
Fifty-six thousand five hundred.
Thank you.
Second?
We have a second from Commissioner Goodak, motion made by Commissioner Partes. We will call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodak?
Yes.
Commissioner Partes?
Yes.
President Nafas?
Yes. Yes.
You're now at the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. Persons addressing the commission, so I'll state his or her name and address and may speak for three minutes unless extended for an additional minute by the mayor. This is for public comment on items that are not on the agenda tonight. It's time for public comment on an item. If that is on the agenda, is after the item is written into the record and public comment period is over. That item. And a reminder, no comment shall be made related to personal life, personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons' ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted.
Anyone from the public here comment? Of course, you would read it. Gwen Clark Reed? Gwen, you need to mute yourself.
There you go. Gwen Clark Reed, fourteen thirty, Southwest Sixth Way. Mayor, I, I would like for the, the water department, the billing department, as far as the utilities are concerned, you know, it, that, the way that bill is laid out, it's very confusing. I know it's confusing to me, and I heard other people have said that the, the billing is confusing to them when they're reading their bill. Can we simplify that, that process? I, I don't know, you know, how other people feel about it, but I really would like someone to look at the way that bill is presented to the, to you and look at possibly simplifying that, the, the way it's, it's, it's laid out. That's the water bill, okay? Thank you.
Kitty Friedtag?
Katie Friedtag, four eighteen Southeast Second Street. I just want to bring up a couple of events that have happened recently. First being Festival of Arts and Pioneer Days. I thought the combined event went great. And I appreciate the three commissioners and the mayor for coming out and supporting this event. It really went well, and I thought it was awesome. Saturday was another fabulous event, and the African-American Heritage Board or Heritage Banquet was fabulous. I truly enjoyed meeting all the new people. I definitely think the way to go is quality events over quantity events. That should be the mantra of the city. I see David looking at me like, yes. Definitely the way to go. In addition, I have one request to the city, and I don't know if this is something that we can make happen, but I hope we can. A lot of people like myself buy the parking stickers every year. And some of us, like myself, who go down to the beach and walk in the mornings, are there earlier than six AM. Is it possible to allow? I always start out down at Embassy Suites. If is it possible to open that particular parking lot to people that have stickers earlier than six AMs? I have to, I have places to be by six thirty, seven o'clock. I got to be, like to go in and get my miles done and get on the road. And if we could possibly open that parking lot, open at, you know, five, five-thirty for people like me who like to get out and walk the beach early with our parking passes. If we could have, if we could do that and not be worried about getting a ticket every time we park there, I would appreciate it if something, we can make that happen. And in addition to being a vendor of all, jack-of-all-trades, a volunteer, I should say, I'm also a vendor of the city. And so often, I hear throughout all the different departments how the city has no money for infrastructure management, infrastructure changes, things that need to be happening. But hey, if we've got money to spend on other things, then we've got money to spend on our infrastructure. So I'm hoping that the city will be looking at some of the projects that I've proposed through the different departments and see if we can't get some of these passed since we've got money to spend. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'm going to close it to the public then. This Friday time, rather than going to a department with a suggestion of how you think you might want to go to your commission and ask how the tax dollars should, should go in that direction. And I am going to suggest to Representative Reed that when it comes to the water bill, we have changed it several times. There are things by statute we have to have on there. If you have a suggestion on what is confusing, it's better for it. You tell us what it is, as opposed to saying just take a look at it and try to simplify it because it's a little too big. So if you give us an idea of what you think is confusing, we'll see if we can make some adjustments to it. I think that might be a better way for the staff to approach this. Okay? Moving forward?
We are now at the consent portion of tonight's agenda, and currently items two through five are on consent.
Are there any polls for items two through five? There are a public site. Trying to do around my. No polls for two through five? Okay, so we're going to, we'll poll number two. Any other polls between two through five? Anyone from the commission or anybody in the public, like common items two, three, four, or five? The one, two, three, four, or five? Okay. You have hands up? Okay, let's just go ahead by each item.
Okay. Item number two is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving a facility use agreement with Toastmasters International, doing business as Club Paradise Toastmasters, one, five, six, seven, eight, zero, eight, for public speaking and leadership classes at the Hillsborough Community Center, approving the waiver of facility use fees to support training within the city, providing for execution, severability, and effectiveness.
Vice Mayor, are you have questions? I just want a little bit more clarification. Is there any opportunities for residents to take advantage of Toastmasters being in the city of Deerfield Beach? And we providing a way for them? I'd like to have a question on that.
Vice Mayor, I, there is definitely an opportunity for Deerfield Beach residents to participate in the program. In fact, the majority of those that do participate in it are Deerfield Beach residents. The costs involved with being in the program are, go to the International Toastmasters Association as well as for the various speakers, materials, and resources that are needed in order to conduct the program. I don't know if we have the applicant here to speak more about the fee, those fees that, that are borne upon each participant or the ability to waive those or reduce those for Deerfield Beach residents. But I suspect based on past discussions and when this is brought up to the commission or that the answer is that the costs are the cost for, for what it is. It's not a necessarily moneymaker for anybody. It's just what they have to pay to contribute to participate in the program.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the commission before you?
What are the fees involved that they want us to waive? How much are we talking about a week?
To address that question, Commissioner, there is no request for... Well, let me clarify. They're asking for the, the rental fee of the facility to be waived.
And that rental fee is?
I'll need Ms. Renard to, to address that question for me.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Chairman of Parks and Recreation. I was so excited. I got halfway down here. So I'm glad you asked another question. They usually are there two hours at twenty-five dollars an hour for fifty weeks. You take a couple of weeks off during the year. So if I'm asked, right, twenty-five hundred dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to open it to the public. Chris, we have you online.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hey, so just before I give my comment, I just wanted to say.
I need to leave an address for the records, sir, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
That's what I thought. We may have lost them. Okay. Anyone else from the public here comment? Okay, I'm going to close it to the public then unless he comes back, which. He is. Commission? Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Vice President Preston, second by Commissioner Do that. We'll call please.
Yes.
Commissioner Do that?
Yes.
Commissioner Partas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor President?
Yes.
Mayor Dan.
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution to the City Commission, the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the expenditure in an amount up to exceed one hundred thousand dollars with people ready Inc. for temporary staffing services for Department of Sustainable Management, providing an effective date.
Santucci comments?
I made this thing was was on consensus, I don't know if it was specifically polled by anyone commissioner, but I'm happy to address the questions that the commission and public may have.
Anyone from the public here comment on the side of? Not seeing any of the closes to the public commission. I'm sorry, Commissioner Vice Mayor and Commissioner Partas. We're reopening to the public on the side of, is everyone okay with that?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm smart, read.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen Clark Reed, fourteen thirty Southwest Sixth Way. What positions are being filled by these employees? Or these people that are coming, you know? What temporary positions?
Did you have any other questions?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Chad Gressi.
Good evening, Chad Gressi, for Sustainable Management. So right now we have six vacant positions in the department that we cannot fill. We have been using people already since two thousand sixteen. They have supplemented our city staff to do the bulk collection and we are in dire need of that service.
My my question would be always, we're trying to staff the positions that are coming.
Correct, we cannot fill positions.
What we are trying.
Correct, absolutely.
If I if I may, Vice Mayor, you know, this, they've been calling these times the great resignation. And in the day's current labor market, we are having some difficulty filling various positions. Criticality of the operation that Mr. Gressi oversees now requires us to ensure that we have the staffing levels necessary to service the community. So this is a means to to maintain that level of service until we are able to fill permanent positions which we do pursue.
I just have to know that you're trying to do that because others now would really be struggling with this. But but I understand you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Sorry, Commissioner. Partas, your question?
So some of these people like drivers?
No.
They're inside positions?
No, these are, these are helpers, so they'll they'll help the driver.
Okay, so they're on the truck.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Slap.
Yeah. For motion?
Motion approved.
I'm sorry. Yes, I believe I closed it to public, I'm sorry if I did not close it to public.
There's a motion approved.
Yeah, there was a motion by Commissioner Partas. Second. Second by Vice Mayor.
Commissioner Droski?
Yes.
Commissioner Do that?
Yes.
Commissioner Partas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor President?
Yes.
Mayor Dan.
Yes.
Item number four is a resolution to the City Commission, the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the amended and restated Mission Square Retirement Governmental Money Purchase Plan Adoption Agreements for Retirement Plan one, zero, nine, zero, five, zero, and plan number one, zero, six, three, five, two, providing for execution, severability, and an effective date.
Is there any from the public here comment on the side of? Not seeing any other closes to public. Commission?
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Partas.
Second.
Thank you, second by Vice Mayor. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Close the post. Passes down.
Item number five is a resolution to the City Commission, the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving an agreement with Robert Happ International, Inc. for temporary staffing, direct hire, and other employer services in an amount up to exceed one hundred and sixty thousand dollars utilizing the Houston-Gallston Area Council of Governments Cooperative Purchasing Program Contract T S zero, six, dash, two, one, providing for execution and an effective date.
Mission, any comments? Anyone from the public here comment on the side of? Gwen?
Thank you, Mayor Gwen Clark Reed, fourteen thirty Southwest Sixth Way. As I read the backup for this item, Mayor, I noticed that these positions are in finance. And I, are we not developing our own people in finance to be able to move up and, you know, be placed in some of these positions rather than going out with temporary positions? Finance is is so important and, you know, having stability in that department. I have, you know, I'm questioning it. So if Mr. Santucci can answer that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? It's to be more explicit to the public. Motion approved. Hold on one second.
Thank you, and an excellent question. And the answer is yes, yes, we do, we do look for staff development so that when the time comes, they are ready to to move up into these positions. But currently, we're going through recruitment processes for one of these positions and we'll follow it up with with the second one after that. But these are temporary staff cap measures, again, as mentioned with the previous item, until these positions are filled, whether it is by a somebody who has applied from within the organization or or outside of it.
Yeah, thank you. Mission?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Partas, second by Vice President Preston. We'll call please.
Commissioner Droski?
Yes.
Commissioner Do that?
Yes.
Commissioner Partas?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Dan.
Yes.
We are now at comments by administration and legal. I'll start tonight, I just have two comments. One, with respect to the charter amendment discussion we had tonight, you know, I have to, I'm going to research this issue with the with the other valid question that was raised. I just want to point out that it may require that we do another first reading for both of those items, given that the ordinance didn't contemplate the other question. But I will let you know that in short order and I will look into that. So just heads up on that. And then the second item is a follow up to a previous, I think, discussion that was brought before the commission regarding some of the legislative bills in the current twenty twenty two legislative session. One of the items, I believe it was Commissioner Droski who brought it up previously with respect to the sovereignty protection that the city has afforded. And this is with respect to a claim like personal injury claims against the city, auto accident claims against the city. Right now, current state law provides that the city's exposure and liability in those cases is capped at two hundred thousand per person, three hundred thousand per incident. There was, there was a House bill and a Senate bill filed on this issue. The Senate bill originally proposed to raise those caps to one million dollars per person, three million dollars per incident. The House bill version was one million dollars per person and unlimited cap per incident. So a substantial dramatic increase in the city's potential liability exposure. So some good news, there has been some amendments to those bills. As they currently stand today, after going through the three committees, the Senate bill version is now down to, for a city like Deerfield Beach, over fifty thousand population, three hundred thousand per claim, four hundred thousand per occurrence. The House goal version is four hundred thousand per claim, six hundred thousand for occurrence. So the Senate bill version is is better currently for the city with respect to liability exposure for both the city and the taxpayers of the city. So just wanted to point that out. You may want to reach out in particular to your congressman to push for the Senate version. And I believe the Senate bill version is now being supported by the Florida League. So I just wanted to update you on that. Happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
I have lots, but we'll set about one.
Sounds good.
She said two, two.
Thank you, just two items for this evening. One, talking about Tenth Street as we did earlier, coming up on a future agenda and what I would like to do is bring a letter before the City Commission that would be supported by resolution to urge and try to get the Department of Transportation to provide us a decision related to some outstanding issues related project in which they're looking for us to enter into certain agreements. These issues relate mainly to utility water lines, or more specifically, the unique opportunity for this project to include recurring water along the corridor, not only for the project, but for the region as well. There are landscaping considerations that I believe the City Commission should be aware of. Currently, point zero four percent of project costs has been dedicated to landscaping, whereas there is statutory language that speaks to amount up to one point five percent of the total contract or construction cost that to be dedicated to landscaping. So there's the landscaping itself, the irrigation, and then of course, the land, the long term landscaping requirements, we will be responsible for that. So so with those outstanding issues, there is also, we learned more recently, now that PDV study is complete and they're looking at right away acquisition, that the city stands to lose a substantial amount of private property that FDOT will need to acquire in order to secure this project that could amount to somewhere in the realm of of a hundred thousand dollars. So these are the issues that I would like to formalize within a letter and bring that back before the City Commission. But as I'm drafting that, if there is any additional input from anyone commissioner or even at this point, I definitely look forward to look forward to that that input from you. And I'd like to bring that to you at a at a future commission meeting. The second thing is, is we are obviously still in a position of having three commissioners on the dais and two remote. But we discussed that we would, we approach that topic every so often. And so I thought it'd be appropriate at this point in time to do that and just gauge the commission's will to to bring back the dais in its entirety in person. So it's time to have that discussion as we had discussed during this.
Commissioner Partas?
Yeah, I feel this way. We can do one of two things. We can either bring back all five or assign three. And if the other two want to come, fine, if they want to be still fun. They feel safer being still. I personally would rather attend to all of these. I think we have our glass here, we're protected from the public as well as each other. Overall, I don't see the harm anymore. My proposal is, you know, you can either have all five or assign three and if the other two want to come, that's fine. They don't, it could be vice versa. That would be my proposal.
Yeah. Anyone else want to weigh in on that? This is a conversation that we can have with the next meeting. I don't think we can just say right now. Talk about it. There's no rush to make a decision. Think about it a little bit and see how we decide to approach this. So we may give you a determination next meeting, is that all right?
That's fine, so we'll just continue with the three, two schedule that we currently have in place today.
Yeah. For the record, I'll do with having everybody back, but I'd like to have you two there just because it gives us a little more space up here than it should be. A lot of different places that are spread out, so. Or at least one of you. I'm not sure which one, since I knew it's going to be you that day.
I would get a third of them to make it to sixteen.
No, I, I just have a place first. What do we can talk about the next meeting, that's all right. You do it now?
I'm okay, but I'd like, I would have liked to have shown up, then agreed to swap with you so that I could be here.
Today.
I'll still do it. Okay, fine, I'll be here on the fifteenth.
If I may.
Discuss it then, thank you then.
If I may give a little input, I think we made a motion to have that second reading in April. So the reasons for, I think, Commissioner that you want to be here for the fifteen may not exist. But I know that the city attorney may need to look at redoing the first reading. So once we work through that, I'll let you know and try to try to work through that with you.
Okay, fine, I I personally would rather be here personally than on Zoom anytime I can. So if there's no restriction, I will be here except if I'm not well and I want to zoom. I am definitely for if a commissioner wants to be here, let it be. That's what we got this on. And the rate is down below five percent now according to today's paper in Florida.
Okay, we can, we can talk about it next meeting.
Fine.
Excellent. Anyone else?
Nothing from administration and legal. Your commissioner comments?
Okay. Commissioner comments? Do you want to go first?
I, yeah, I don't care, I'll go first. People should be aware that after the November election, you have to re-register to vote. Our legislature in Tallahassee likes voter suppression. Your voting records will be wiped out after the November election and you have to re-register. I have opened up a registration drive both in District Two and District Three where I have people who have a card that you can fill out to check your present registration. You don't want to call up and wait on the phone. You can mail it in. Our people are not allowed to mail it in for you. We can help you fill out the card and then you have to mail it. It's postage free. You don't even need an envelope. It folds, it's got its own adhesive, you fill it out, drop it in the box. That'll correct any mistakes on your voter registration. However, as of the November election, everything is wiped out and you have to re-register with one of these forms or a regular registration form. Isn't that nice? Every two years, you have to re-register to vote. But that's the way it is. So I've opened two drives. I'm hoping to, if I can, to open one in every district. It's very easy. The forms cost me ten cents apiece. I just picked up five hundred of them to help people vote. I feel that strongly about letting the people vote. So I'm putting my money where my mouth is. District Three is doing well. We're making a wonderful park in Century Village for the residents, the old south porch. And like any other neighborhood, it's no different. I know where a lot of old seagulls live in there, we have pride just like everywhere else. Nothing changed. Neighborhoods and neighborhoods, good neighborhoods, bad neighborhoods, stuff happens all over and you deal with it. As far as the city's concerned, I don't know anybody sitting up here that doesn't love the city. I'm here since nineteen eighty nine. My parents came here in nineteen seventy four when Century Village was built. I came down in eighty nine to help them, they were getting elderly and staying. And I love this city. It's one of the best places I've ever lived. I love the beach, I love the pier, I like fishing, I like golf, and I like serving the people. And it makes me want to get up every day and go to work. I'm not retired, I never will. I'll be doing. I'm not retired. I never will. I'll be doing something. If I'm not up here, I'll be down there busting good chops. That's the way I am. So that's it in District Three.
Thank you. Jump around to District One.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first comment I'd like to make is the March fifteenth meeting, I'd like to see if we can move it to the fourteenth. I have family members, my, my wife and kids are traveling on the fifteenth, and I'd like them to be there when I'm inducted as Vice Mayor. So if nobody has any conflicts, I'd like to make that motion to move it, the March fifteenth meeting to the March fourteenth.
I cannot attend that meeting.
Okay. So be it.
Sorry, but I, I.
That's okay.
You don't do without me.
No, that's fine.
I, I know you have a thing, but I, I'm being elected to office in my Democratic club as president on the fourth. I think I can be there for the election.
No, that's quite all right. Earlier last week, I was fortunate enough to attend Deerfield Beach Middle School's reveal for the new teachers lounge that was erected by Deerfield Beach Cares and Kiwanis. And it was a tremendous event, and just people giving back to the people who, who give to our children. These teachers go through a lot, and especially the last two years, they've been through a lot. So to see what Deerfield Beach Cares and Kiwanis did for the, the Deerfield Beach Middle School teachers, I was very proud, and it was a very moving ceremony. So I just wanted to, to reach out and thank both organizations for everything that they do for our city. I also want to, we talked earlier about Pioneer Day and the art festival and how it was a tremendous weekend from the parade all the way to the, the bonfire. But I want to make a special shout out to, to one individual that really made this happen, and she did it on one leg. The city has, has a great employee by the name of Elizabeth Ricci. And she, she was, she coordinated both events with a torn ACL. And I just wanted to, to just, you know, we have a lot of staff that really loves this city and goes above and beyond. And what the staff did to make those two days such successful, I just wanted to thank all staff, but especially wanted to, to thank Ms. Ricci for all that she did. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, I'm wearing this shirt and tie, not out of a coincidence, but for a reason. There are millions of people in Europe right now, in Ukraine, that are fighting to have a democratic government right now, as everybody's, I'm sure, aware, they are being invaded by a, the Russians. And so I just wore this just to show my support and have people realize that individuals in other countries are willing to die to have the type of government that we have. And, you know, the United States does have its challenges, but we are still the greatest country in the world. And the world does aspire to be more like the United States. Thank you.
This is your address.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I did not have any planned comments for tonight until the city manager mentioned Southwest Tenth Street. So I feel compelled to, to jump into that, that fray. If you've been reading the information that we've been getting from the city manager's office, his staff is meeting somewhat regularly with F D O T on the nuts and bolts of this particular project. And we've always said from day one that the devil is in the details, and now the details are coming out. And so I implore my fellow commissioners to keep an eye on those details because these details are not necessarily Deerfield-friendly. And it's something that we have to keep an eye on going forward. These, you know, we'll be asked to approve agreements without having certain facts and circumstances in place. And I think that's intentional. That's my opinion. No one told me to say that. That's my opinion. And I've, I've lived this process long enough to know to keep not one eye open, but both when it comes to F D O T and this particular project. So any letter that the city manager intends to bring forth to us, I obviously would like to put in, in, in my input into that. I encourage you all to read it and to put in your input as well. And I want to thank the city manager for bringing that suggestion up because I think it has reached the level, the commission level where we need to chime in because the conversations are not necessarily all in our favor. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. You really meant to consider your thinking of that. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say, if I mentioned comments, so. Now, I would challenge everyone here that lives in the city of Deerfield Beach to know a little bit about your city history and then to ask my crucial question. Have we grown? Have we gotten better? Is the city trending in the right direction? And here's why I'm bringing that up. When I first moved here, you know, the day that we working now, my name, not my name, it's called life. And I can remember when there were huge, huge parades on, on Millstone Boulevard. And there were rebel flags all over the place. They used to say that that was not a representation for everybody that behind. And so, you know, when you look at that, I think we're also charged responsibility to look at how the city changed. First of all, the name's changed to Pioneer Day. And Bray, Brayway Elementary, which is a black elementary school. And it was a black elementary school for a reason because segregation was in place. Kids could not go to school together. And so Brayway was there to educate black kids. And Brayway, you know, so many other people that were involved with that, was the grand marshal of Pioneer Day. What does that mean? And do, and do we just pass by that without acknowledging understanding where we came to where we are and being, and having understood that Deerfield Beach, like many other places, made monumental mistakes in how people got along. But are we getting better? And I say, you know, situation like what we had with Pioneer Day. And I looked at that book. And I looked at, you know, the people that was there, that was very diverse, the people that along the parade route, kids asking for candy, that sort of thing, it was a very nice thing. And I really, really enjoyed that. The Black History Month for the city of Deerfield Beach, we're growing, we're getting better. I want to thank staff. I want to thank city manager and his staff consideration for Black History Month. We're getting better. The Black Heritage Bank with huge success. I want to thank my colleagues for coming out to that, being a part of it, showing their face. It was said, I, I want, I want to tell you that our sheriff was there, a lot of politicians that were there. But they were there because they say you have to do something very nice in the city, and they appreciate it. I would like to thank city staff. I'd like to thank Theresa Wren for the great job that she did in helping with that. Theresa, great job. Thank you. I'd like to thank Liz Ritchie. She did a good job. I'd like to thank Monique Spencer, who just worked tirelessly, you know, bringing things together. Monique is a, is a very good person. She's known her very well. Just wanted to thank her as well. And I'd like to thank African American Heritage School for the teacher that they put in on their kind of, but you know, put this, put this on. I was asked by some, some people. Why do you, why do you have that double treatment? So why do you have it with double treatment? And the answer is maybe more space. And guess what? Even that double treatment sold out. So that was the reason. And lastly, you know, when we brought up about the water, there is confusion. I, I'm not, my water bill, I don't know, I don't, I just, I just pay it. Because I don't know the gallonage. I don't know how we got to where we are in terms of, like, what I owe. There is some problem with that, but that's not clear to me either. So she actually makes a good point, and other people have complained to me about that water. So I would say that, you know, there is some validity to what you're saying. Again, thanks to my colleagues for, you know, for their attendance over at the Black Heritage Bank. But I've been getting a lot of calls about it. It just turned out really, really nice. So thank you very much. That's it for me then.
Thank you. Yeah, like, like I said, if there's specifics, I think probably the helpful staff. What's confusing. I know that we have coming forward a letter or whether it's some more support for the commuter rail system that I know that staff's been working on that letter. Of course, we have the Urban Land Institute in town this week. We've got a public workshop on this on Thursday to talk about the rail, what's the options are, possibilities are. I, I want to thank this partnership that we have in the Urban Land Institute. Fantastic, which organization, which you have a lot of experts in certain fields and committing, and gives some real-world advice as far as what could possibly happen or what we could possibly explore for certain projects like this. If you look at Sullivan Park, the Urban Land Institute was vital, bringing that forward. So they're, but on that early on, tremendously helpful. I will always be grateful for sitting next to the gentleman on a funny trip to Tallahassee happened to be the Urban Land Institute, which is where I first got out about it. So I'm glad they're in town and I will look at that. So I encourage public to come out and give their input on that. But we also, I, I'm going to recommend that we put together, and I know we're working on it, a letter of demands for concerns that we have regarding Tenth Street as representative on the M P O, to ask to have it on the agenda or at least have a discussion on it at the M P O level. So we get their full support because I do feel at this point that we are sliding back to what we've had before. Though I think we've overcome a lot of it. We're sliding back to the situation. F D O T is forgetting some of the promises that were made or discussions we had and are now trying to slide in and forward on projects just because we've been able to kind of come to an agreement on how to move this project forward. So the sooner we have that, the better. We can go ahead and do that. Earlier tonight, I did a comment during one of the public comments. Of course, he used some inappropriate language, but we're forgiven for that. But I, I, in a row, he said, he was reading someone else's words. I thought he was quoting somebody because he had a couple of quotes in there. But it goes, I think, I misspoke on that. He actually, it was his quote, it's his, he wrote it down. So hopefully, no one will bow on that. As far as the Black Heritage Bank, I have no problem with that. That's a job, great. And the one thing I would say, and I hope they look at it, is, you know, one of the toughest decisions I ever made sitting up here, one that still kind of bugs me is when we, when pass through the board, it was so long. You brought forward, put linear part, travel on Tenth Street. Passer Board was so alive at that time. I had always had a problem maybe fixing after people before they pass because there have been cases, cases in South Florida, which things in the name now for people. Something has occurred and then the city is stuck in a situation where they have something named after someone who has done something that is not worthy of having the name on, 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 or something like that. So I was the lone voted voter against that. I stuck with my guns just out of what I felt was, was a standard policy. And that one always bugged me because I didn't think of a better person to have something named after. So, you know, we had some wonderful honor reads on Saturday night, all of which have recently passed. We still have a lot. And, you know, I think about it, I would love to see Mr. Char see other, there's so many, I, I hope we have a portion where we recognize the people who go along with this, maybe not have gotten the things they deserve. But I'd really like to see us give out awards to people who are still with us, especially people who've been here for a long time, done a lot of great things. I know that you had verbal mention playing part, give him praise. There, there's a lot of other people out there, whether it be, you know, people that have served or people that are volunteered. There's a lot of people out there, and I would love to see us be able to. Yeah, this was just a meat situation. It was different. Yes, I agree. I agree. This was, it struck me as unusual. I knew that wasn't what we wanted. I need to get back to that, and I think I might, might, you know, that when it comes to honoring people that are still with us, who probably in a position that when pass through the board was, really do no harm at that point, but like. But it's, it's something that, you know, as a suggestion on that. I believe that's all to count. I want to thank staff for all the great job, the great events we had. How it was handled, what you did. I want to thank the public for coming out, participating in it. All the volunteers did a fantastic job. I, and I look back, we were able to do our first bonfire. I know it's first season. Well, mission come and then they come back. We'll be able to do that again. So I, I do want to say this. You know, we go round and round about sitting up here and being like all sorts of accusations about people in the same place. You know, I, I'm, I'm sitting up here, I am not afraid to challenge people, and then you're just going to sit here and flat out lie. So I'm just going to put a blanket statement out. I'm not going to tolerate. It's, the internet is a soapbox for cowards. Okay, if you're going to go online and make some disgusting comments about people personally or anything like that, especially when you live in glass houses, you know, it's really something that I'm not going to put up by sitting up here. I get the luxury as America, rather than you. I am not going to be afraid to call people out and say things just suddenly aren't true, whether they're, you know, and it's a hard enough world that we live in and dealing with difficult decisions. But when people muddy the water with just complete untruths that are intentionally untrue, it's just not okay. And I'm not afraid to challenge them. You know, we all have the right to debate. We all have the right to have a difference of opinion. But some of the things that go beyond that, and this is unique to Deerfield Beach, aside from the institution, it's happening everywhere. We talk to every single city that we know. They have their group of people that just do things that are, that go beyond the pale. And it happens all the way up our national level. It's a shame. We can debate, and I think our debates are getting a little heated up here. Kind of keep focused and make sure that as we're trying to win support on items, that we're not taking people down. We're trying to get that support, and I can be guilty of that as well at times. So, you know, I hope that we all just kind of come out, come together and talk about these issues factually as opposed to, you know, taking personal shots and really don't have any place in the yard. So with that, I want to thank all of you for being here and for much future. All right. All the favors say hi.
Hi.